This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Ganger?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Wells?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Here. All those wishing to participate in the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, before we go into this meeting, we place ourselves before you, for you are filled with beauty and light and care deeply about us. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to respect and understand the opinions of others. Help us to value and appreciate those we are about to meet. May your light enfold us. May your spirit guide us. May your grace abound in us. We make this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I just want to change one thing.
All right.
What do you want to?
What do you want to change?
I want to move on the consent agenda, item six, to a separate item.
Okay.
Wherever you want to put it. Old business or?
We'll put it right after the consent agenda. We'll do it.
Okay.
So we'll take that off. So the approval of the agenda with the removal of item number six from the consent agenda. I will make a motion. We approve the agenda with the change noted. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Next up, we will do recognition of visitors. Point a new police chief.
Eric, Commissioner. Hey, I want to announce that Eric Ver has been chosen to serve as the next police chief for the Arkansas City Police Department. Eric has 26 years of experience in law enforcement and will take on the position effective immediately. Eric has been serving as interim since the time of the previous Arkansas City Police Chief Dan Moore to pass March. Filling the role of interim police chief is to become apparent very quickly that Eric is the right person for the job. Yet the trust and respect of the officers in the department, other city staff, elected officials, and most importantly, the citizens of Arkansas City. We are very fortunate to have someone of Eric's caliber in our ranks to elevate to this important position. The role of chief of police requires a senior professional who knows all aspects of the law enforcement. That includes experience working on streets, building relationships with the community, working with other law enforcement agencies at the local and state level, and most importantly, a transformational leader that works to meet and collaborate with other special needs affected community. Those are rare attributes defining one individual, and Eric is a seasoned professional who brings all in. So I want to thank Eric.
You made it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that so much. Thank you. You all deserve it. I appreciate it. Thank you. It's a great pleasure. Thank you so much.
We're going to go ahead and reiterate your vote. So make sure I'm right. You know, I can finally swear. Support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Kansas.
And of the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency of Texas.
And the agency of Texas.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountant for our actions.
Accountant for our actions.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duty imposed upon me.
Perform the duty imposed upon me.
As police chief of the city of Arkansas City.
As police chief of the city of Arkansas.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. So help me go. So I will try to be brief. First of all, thank you so much for having the support and confidence in me to do this position. I know that I personally learned so much from Chief Dan Moore. He has set our department on an excellent path, and I hope to keep us on that path and actually build and grow from where we're at today. To, I really have to thank my family who are here tonight for their love and support. I just celebrated my 25th year with the police department, and I know it's been a long haul for, not only for me. It seems like 25 years kind of flash by pretty quickly. It's equally tough for law enforcement families because there's that fear of the unknown. So thank you so much. I love you guys. I also have to thank the members of the Arkansas City Police Department who are here and in force today. Pardon the bad joke. These individuals I work with on a daily basis, they are, they're top notch on what they do and how they perform their jobs and how they care about this community. And that's what's amazing is how much they do care, and it's obvious through the things that they do day in and day out. So thank you all very much.
We love you guys.
Good group.
So to talk a little bit about some top immediate goals and maybe some long-term goals within the police department. First of all, we want to talk about recruitment and retention. We want to make sure that we're hiring the most qualified people possible because we put a lot of emphasis and trust in them to go out and do a job. That's very important for our community. So moving forward, we're going to look really hard at recruitment and retention. So not only hiring the best, but keeping the best within our ranks, and we've done a pretty good job of that so far. Calea accreditation, that's been a journey. It's a marathon that we've been going through for several years now. We want to close that chapter and open a new one. So we're really working hard to try to get that done within the next few months. Long-term goals, I think that one thing that has finally improved for me is maintaining positive relations with our community. We do that through very creative events, and all of these folks that are standing here today participate in those things. And so we really want to continue doing that because I feel like it builds trust within the community and it shows that we are people too. We are humans, and we'll get out and we'll talk to just anybody. So that's going to be very important. Also, officer physical and mental wellness. We've got to try and keep these folks mentally well and physically well because we rely on them to be out there protecting us and doing a job for us. The last thing is tackling issues facing our youth today, which includes suicide prevention. We've lost an inordinate amount of young people to suicide, and there's a lot of difficulties facing our youth today. And to be quite honest, the youth are our future. They're going to be our future leaders. So as a department, we're going to take a good, long look at some of those issues that are facing juveniles today and do what we can to help bring them up. So again, I just want to thank Randy and the entire city staff for all the love and support. I have heard positive things from the community. Everywhere I go, it seems like I talk to someone who says, hey, are you the chief yet? And I can say, yes, yes, I am. There is one other person that I wanted to recognize real quick. Linda Bradley is here. Yes, I just called you out. So Linda actually worked here along with Karen when I first came on 25 years ago. And I think that she may have said something about me being the chief someday. So it just so happened that she was in town today and was able to come celebrate this with us. So very happy to see Linda and for her to be here tonight.
It's just Florida, they're getting rain, so she came up here.
Yeah. Who would want to skip Florida to be in Kansas? Anyway, thank you all so much, and I really plan on doing the best job that I can for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Linda, Linda, Linda.
I'll talk that all the time.
She was chief secretary.
She saw it in the county values, but that's good.
That's why, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You guys are welcome to stay for the meeting.
Next up is the consent agenda, and the consent agenda still includes items one, two, three, four, and five. Commissioner Eastman has removed item number six, which we will discuss after the consent agenda. So all those, I will need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which again includes items one through five. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next up will be a separate item that was removed from the consent agenda. Grant by SCK Health, recommended appointments of Brittany Carter and Bob Matthews to the South Central Kansas Medical Center Board of Trustees.
As all of you know, I resigned the 24th or 25th of June, and I had issues with what the trustees were doing. And I made a request a time or two about the trustees getting together to recommend or talk to replacement trustees for the hospital. And that didn't happen. And then with another item that came up that I thought was not right, that made my decision. And I also, I talked to the two that they recommended, and I talked to Brittany Carter last night. I talked to Bob Matthews. Brittany Carter, I think, will be okay. Bob Matthews, I have a problem with. I think he has too many old issues that he's not going to take the hospital as his main concern and come back to the city and complain to us. That is my, that is my feeling. I don't know if any of the other trustees have talked to either of them. I know, I know Commissioner Ganger and Commissioner Warren talked to Britt, but they didn't talk to Bob Matthews that he could remember. So if he can't remember if they talked to him, I don't know how he can remember a lot of things that goes on at the hospital. So that's, that's my objection to him. I also want Larry to get a set on the replacement of all the other trustees according to our ordinance and get that set. I know with me being resigning, we'll get the department started. So I want that to be done by the city commissioners to get that done now. And that's, that's my concern.
Well, I want to clarify some stuff. We, a couple of years ago, we had, two years ago, we had a meeting, and Jeff brought in the candidates that, that, there were like 10 of them, but I got like five or six of them showed that day. And we kind of interviewed them. They told about what they did and this and that and so forth. And so we went through that process. And then we gave Jeff and Dan orders, not orders, but told them to go out and pick the two best or pick the best candidates out of that tent. And we all agreed upon that. Then, then after that, you know, we had problems with the, we lost our CFO, so we had to go through a process going through our CFO. Then we had a process, Nick Hernandez left, and we had a process. We had to do a new city manager, go through that process. That was about six months and so forth. And then COVID hit, you know, so we had several issues going on. But we, me as a commissioner, I'm one-fourth wrong. We should have, we should have done some things back then. They told us we needed to do it. Our attorneys told us twice, I know once, but maybe twice, that we need to get this thing done, and we didn't do it. And I'll take blame for that quarter percent, but there's four of us on the board at that time. So therefore, but like I said, you know, we're making the changes right now. So, and I'm going with what Jeff Bowen and Dan Pitt on the two candidates, you know, and I, you know, he's done a wonderful job. He's got this hospital turnaround, and I'm not going to change anything going forward. So therefore, I make a motion that we elect the, one second here. Grant by the SCK Health, recommended appointments of Brittany Carter and Bob Matthews to the South Central Medical Center Board of Trustees.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Dwayne, your other issue, which we can talk about later, but this is the board of point was, what were you wanting from Larry?
I want him to get us set on the road to get the ordinance that we passed to enforce and authorize. I mean, get us to work it.
Yeah.
Because it's not working now, the way I look at it.
Well, that's one commissioner's opinion. That's not other, you know, we got, you know, right now, we got one, we got one layman on the thing, which is Dan Chairman of the Board because he resigned from the, I mean, from the commission. Now we're appointing two, so there are three on there right now. So we have five right now. But I think what we want to do is over a period of, you know, two years from now, you know, we're slowly, we're rotating where we'll basically get out of that picture. But that's, you know, that's one commissioner's opinion.
If I may, mayor commissioners, the last hospital charter ordinance we did was to bring us down to two or fewer.
Yeah.
So this would be in compliance with at least that number.
Correct.
With these two appointments.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the SCK Health recommended appointments of Brittany Carter and Bob Matthews to the SCK Medical Center Board of Trustees, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. I wanted to hear.
I heard it.
Motion passes four to one. Moving on to old business.
Could you read that again? I'm sorry.
Good evening. Last Monday, June 28th, we had a special meeting virtually of the traffic safety committee. About an hour. So we went through the scope agreement with trans systems. They had multiple engineers on the call. Most of the city staff were participants. Commissioner Wells was on the call. We have good representation in the school district, and Dr. Bauer, Jerry Krumlos, Sean McCollum, I think, is a state official. And other districts and districts, and we had some folks from Cali College and some of those departments as well. So I feel like we had a good mix. And Mr. Conheritor, who was on the call tonight, was also just calling. And I made sure to go around and ask everyone their opinion to make sure we weren't missing or overlooking anything. The biggest takeaway, and I'm sorry, I don't have the minutes, I mean, the biggest takeaway, I think we landed on out of that, is that this is just the first step in a longer process. It's hard to think of $25,000 not being a lot of money, but in perspective of this kind of planning, it kind of is. And so trans systems explained the limitation of where with that funding level and why the scope was the way it was. And I think they understood that. And what we kind of put out a challenge to the district was to go and talk to the school board about it. We'll get this process started, but as we get into this planning process, as we identify areas around the schools that we think need more attention, that would be a time that we'd like to visit the school and see if they could kick in some funding, or we can go into more detail, with a safer route of plan or something along those lines. Additionally, it was reminded to us, we had our partners on from the Public Health Law Center in Rice County, and they reminded us that there's the whole phase two grant process that's opening up now through Rice County. After this program, we're doing this out of phase one, and there's another $100,000 out there potentially available for further planning. So they really said to us that this was a good first step and approach to get a kind of full look of everything and really find those hot areas that we want to get into weeds a little more on that line. One of the big pieces of that has to do with, and if you look at the email I handed out, and I apologize, I tried to get to that update. And I've got that next to me, but it is essentially changes to page 17 of this agreement. We will not change legal agreements on this, it's just this tax group.
Larry, you read the legal, everything's all right for you?
So under the city responsibilities, we thought it would just be good to state both parts, which we did previously, just so everyone's clear. We then made a pass to, those first two items were things that were brought up by the Public Health Law Center. And we agreed to discuss, and that's really stuff the city should be doing, not our traffic. So we're going to continue, which we already are, working with Rice County Coalition to work on policies as well as on the grant. Policy work really isn't what trans systems does, but it's everything about what pathway is phase two. So that means looking at a lot of other factors that's, that's going to be going on for four years. And then begin to collect data about barriers and list a whole bunch of different populations. That's really already work we were beginning, comprehensive plan, surveying. The way it was explained to us is when you start looking at like a particular trail corridor, you almost need to go door to door and actually contact the people in that neighborhood. Figure out who the users of that system are and what their impacts are. That is very detailed granular work that is not going to be able to be accomplished in just a few months' time with this plan. That's the next phase of planning, really, that we're going to do. Census data will help a little with that. We should do that in August, but you really can't go beyond the track level on the census. You can't look at the block level data. It's no substitute for almost a day-to-day survey. So we have some experience doing out the LMI survey. It's something we can look at if we think it's merited for a project down the line. So those are the two things the city will start to work on. It's not going to be accomplished just by this way. And then we'll continue to do our inventory and assessment of all of our pavement conditions. Trans systems did agree to go ahead and work with the pedestrian and bicycle coordinator and add that into the scope because that's something that they were kind of ready to do anyway. And part of that will be what Mike Crandall was telling me at the last meeting. When they pass this statewide master bike plan, they're going to give that to us, and trans systems is going to take all those recommendations and feed them into what they're looking at for the city. So the things like reducing speed limits and those sorts of things, if those are what's in the final plan, they'll incorporate that into their analysis. So we kind of basically just kind of split the things that Public Health Law Center brought up. And I think everyone was satisfied with that. It seemed like everyone was, did. And so I did get an email back from them today that they are fine with all these changes to scope. I still have.
So our public safety people that's on that board stuff, the input that we get from that will go towards this?
Okay. So the kickoff meeting will be a week from Friday, and so we'll start kind of going into how we're going to do this. How many meetings are we going to have in public? How are we going to survey? You know, some of that stuff will start going through, especially with the school. And then we'll get back in session because I think parents also, that equation. So that process will take a couple of months. We're going to build out the plan and cover it and collect all the information. But we were in the bikes that city staff are already working on that. We've got the transportation chapter, the conference, the plan. So like I said, I apologize that I don't have the final of that. So I would certainly get that to you guys as soon as they send it back to me. I just don't have access to their documents to make the adjustments, but these are the shape of the reality. So I don't know if that alleviates any of the concerns that were expressed. I felt better after that call. I felt like we were, we understood, everyone was on the same page about what we're doing. There wasn't any, any of the city staff side that was previously. And just, we know that this is just the first step of the process that we're going to do.
It was a very well presented program. And I also agree that we let the schools educators have a lot to say about what they felt, and we agreed with them. So it's only $25,000 or the, and it has to be done tonight, right?
Preferably. I mean, the only realistic alternative was to just say, okay, we're at a high frequency school, let's just do a safer route. We felt like the city really ought to look at the whole city, and then we can work with the school district to get into that more detail. I feel like they should share some of that burden if we get into that process. And you have to have. But we, we still feel like we need to look at everything. We'll say, I want to look at the growth areas and all of that, not just trails. I mean, streets is still a piece of this that we want to definitely consider. So I would ask that you would consider approval of the resolution and essentially just leave these changes to scope. Nothing has changed with the agreement. We're capped at $25,000. We can't exceed that without your permission.
I will move that we approve a resolution approving agreement between the city of Arkansas City and Trans System Corporation of Wichita for professional services to design and construct a multimodal transportation master plan for the city utilizing Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas pathways, Healthy Kansas grant funds for an amount not to exceed $25,000 with the changes.
Thanks.
Page what?
We're all going to give you this thunder here and go.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Next up is new business.
Commissioner, first running of the board, this fixing the compensation, the employees of the city of Arkansas City and repealing ordinance number 2001-064532.
So this is a very, very complicated fix here. Page 45. All we've done is, there was a line for, this changes it to allowing a part-time firefighter and a part-time paramedic.
Can the chief explain to us every piece of that position?
I think we ought to sit here and listen to it.
That long, really explain the words. No.
One of the masseuses, he has a eligible employee that, I mean, that would really help us, but we didn't have a pay code for him. So it'd be a part-time paramedic.
The wording.
Correct. Okay. Right now, we have a part-time firefighter, and we have opportunity to hire a firefighter, paramedic, part-time. If we hired him as a part-time paramedic, we would not be able to.
Is that what I say?
We would be covered just because of the job structure. So all it is, we're working.
Yeah.
And he worked a part-time a couple of years before. So this would allow us, and the part-time paramedic position is created by standing because of issues with getting paramedics. Right now, we're also facing issues with experience on the fire side. So basically, also, I'd like to do a deposition with both sides.
Are you full staff now, chief?
We, we're down.
Okay.
It's part one, and it's part time. Trans system will fill that other position.
In your paramedics, you're full on those, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion for fixing the compensation of employees of the city of Arkansas City, Kansas pursuant to the provision of KSA 14-1501 and repealing ordinance number 2021-06-4532. Could you have made that any more complicated?
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded, and this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ganger?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells? Mayor Rogers?
Yes. Motion carries five oh. I believe that's all new business we have. Before we do the city manager update, we're going to try to find a date to do a work session for the pool. And we're looking at different dates. We're looking at probably sometime the last week of July, maybe. Is that right, Randy? Early in that week or maybe the week before, the 20th to the 27th, somewhere in there, I believe. So.
And we're going to meet with the rec center board.
Rec center board too, yes, to start discussing in more in-depth the pool.
So what day are we looking at?
Well, anything before the 28th.
I'll log in.
And the 21st, we have the housing, the housing.
We have the high act.
Which high act meeting?
Found out today that will be virtually, so we won't have to travel anywhere.
We could do. We just don't know what time yet.
No, we don't have a time yet. So.
So what's the dates now?
Anywhere between the 19th to about the 27th, I believe, somewhere in that timeframe.
Well, I can't, I won't be gone that week of the 20th, 19th, so it'd have to be the 27th of that week. Either Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or.
That's a non-commission meeting, the 27th.
Okay.
It could be the 27th if possible.
What did you say something about?
I'm going with 27th.
Commission meeting.
No, those are Monday nights, so.
You want to have a noon meeting?
7th is a work fine.
Want to do a noon meeting or a 5:30 or noon?
Whatever you guys want to do, I can make work.
Where do you plan on having that? Because that's core.
Waste water? Not the waste water, the water treatment.
Right your lap?
The water treatment facility would be big enough for the rec center and.
Yeah. Yeah. Have it down there. So the 27th?
27th.
27th at noon. 27th at noon.
This is a town hall?
No, this is just a work session with the rec board.
Okay.
Don't want it to be a town hall. You get 500 people.
So that's the only real thing we had out of the special meeting we had at four o'clock today, so, which was, I thought was pretty productive, so. I don't have a whole lot. I think the rest are all in city manager updates. I do want to say one thing on behalf of the, I'd say, I guess I speak for all, for all the people involved in the city fireworks show and the city staff for doing the fireworks and fixing a pretty big issue down there off by Parrish Park. They had a lot going on last week, so. Thank you to the city police, fire, city staff for a great Fourth of July, so. And I know Visit Our City and the Chamber did a lot with it also too, so. I want to just, I want to say thank, thank you to all, to all of anyone who's here.
And to everyone that blew up their house or.
It always seems safe this year.
It just was so celebrated this year. It was great.
It's too much.
It was.
I got tired of cannons going on.
You are for midnight. They went, they were a long night.
And every night.
City manager updates.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Andrew handle, not yet, not yet. The stuff on the, the whole list of things, this mostly has to do with celebration coming up. But a couple of things I wanted to talk about is another special meeting. So we need to talk about direction, kind of the final direction on the budget. And I was hoping. At noon, I think at 10:00 maybe, is that what you thought Scott?
Do a 10:00 AM work?
Friday.
Friday.
It's Friday. It's not too early for anyone, is it?
Yes. Friday.
You can zoom in from your bed. We'll have.
I'll bring you coffee if you make it.
You can't drink.
Could we make it earlier than that?
I'd make it eight. Yeah.
Why?
Because I got to work. I have to work after that.
Yeah, we have a date. I'll leave a date.
It's fun. Eight to work.
Sorry, Karen, I tried.
It's a bit.
No.
That's a bitter.
Okay, Friday.
Eight o'clock?
Yep.
Here. Yeah, we can just meet.
That's the ninth at 8:00 AM.
Yeah, it's Friday.
It's Friday, is it?
Sounds like 2000 to me, but sure it's 8:00 AM.
Call whatever you want. I'm still going. We'll have special donuts for you since it's a.
Special donut? Oh, you better write that down.
Is this Friday?
It's Friday.
Well, that sounds just wonderful, Mayor. Anything else?
And then. I don't have any, I know he's up. Yeah, thank you for, I meant to put that down.
And then the other thing is the housing assessment, our, the hat for our community was, and I did send you an electronic copy last week when we got it out, hot off the presses, and there's a copy on your, so just go through that. That's kind of the findings we had from our, our exercise of assessing our housing.
When will we get our census? You know, we got the census here, but it's not right. I mean, when will it be coming out? Do we know? When? Okay. Well, I mean, I say it's not right. I mean, we don't know. Should be higher than what we think.
And then like we discussed earlier, the, the HyAC, which is the next step in our housing grant process, will be on the 21st, and that's where we would meet with the different agencies at the state and federal agencies that could have assistance for housing in rural communities. So, um, we'll be getting together here in the very near future, staff hopefully tomorrow morning. Kind of hit our game plan. We got two weeks left, so we've got a lot of work to do, is to try to identify, we need somebody from the commission to be part of that, and we're going to need some different people from the, the community. Yes, education in the business world and things that, that we can present our community to, to that group and, um, tell our story. Then they can, they can present the, the programs they have that may fit our community, so. So we'll, we'll be hollering at you on that, so. And then as was pointed out earlier, we had a, that infrastructure issue that popped up on Stormwater over on, um, Washington. Just as a good example of the stuff that's hiding underground right now, that's, you know, 50, 80, 100 years old, that can come up and buy us at any time. So, um, I, I don't know what the final number will be on that, but it, it got expensive pretty quickly, so. By the time we, you know, all the.
Just told him to sweep the street there.
That's all, he was sweeping there when it fell through, so.
It was lucky it could have been a car or something, you know?
Yeah.
I heard that. Yeah, it's pretty good, buddy.
Yeah.
Heaviest thing in town.
So I guess this one, I kind of remind you guys of that one. When I'm whining about infrastructure improvements and how we need to be looking at some of that stuff. But, you know, just a good example of why we need to be doing that, so, especially as we roll in the budget time.
I do want to invite you all to our last few community band concerts. We'll kind of do a greatest hits concert this Thursday at 7:30. Rogers and his family practice are providing free hot dogs and dessert for everyone, so please come down. And I'll talk about the other concerts in a second. Eric, did you want to talk about the bike ride you guys had on Thursday? Yes. So the recreation center is actually hosting a light up the night, a family bike ride. It's going to be at the public walking track, starting at 8:00, 8:00 PM. And so there's a lot of community members that have joined. We will be there registering bicycles for ones that haven't been registered. I believe Rice County, they'd be there, St. Kitts County, I think are going to be distributing bicycle helmets, free of charge. So we would just invite the community to come out to free events, and I think it's just going to be a great time.
Thursday.
Thursday, public track at 8:00 PM.
This Thursday?
Yes. Lots of two wheel fun. You can go to the concert and still make it to. Of course, we saw the farm and our markets going down there as well. I did want to update you, the Rice County meeting at 10:00 AM Tuesday, public teeth will be out at the water treatment facility. We'll be hosting that. And that's a quarterly meeting, so that's more of a bring in community, not just the steering committee business. So you're all certainly welcome to attend then. Learn more about pathway space two, and we're all going to explain stuff. We'll also have that on give to you as well. I believe there's a legislative committee meeting. I haven't heard an update. Cancelled it, so that'll be noon next Tuesday. So the big show is, of course, the 150th celebration. I hope you've seen, well, we had the banner for a while. The flyers have been out. It's on the radio now, I believe.
All over Facebook.
Yeah, we're really blasted to hear these last couple of weeks. So hopefully, people are hearing about it. The word like Pam says, the last thing we want to hear on July 20th. So please, please let people know. There's lots of stuff going on. But starting July 14th, we'll have the kickoff party downtown. We'll block off that block in front of the Burford. I think they're going to have the cornhole. They're going to have just lots of games and stuff. And of course, the indoor market will be going on in the Burford. I'll be at the chamber office handing out t-shirts to talk to all the volunteers. Just a lot of activity going on downtown. That'd be really awesome. Get things going for us. There's also going to be, I'm still not 100% clear on the details, but we're going to have some kind of an interactive tour for those who are interested to go around and learn more about the downtown buildings. And I'm sure you're just about finished with that brand new version. We'll put the tissue touches off today. And we'll have it off the printer and back in time to hand those out. I think the history board people are planning to get to Burford. If they just want to go read about more of the building, but Pam's working on something to get people to actually kind of talk about the history. So we'll have something going on that respect. Thursday night, the 15th is the final concert of the community band season. It's our 150th anniversary as well as the city's. July 15th is actually the official sesquicentennial date, based on when they celebrated our centennial in 1971, which I predicted. So it's the city's birthday, basically. So that'll be a really awesome concert. Gary Gackster is coming back. I hope he'll conduct a few pieces. He wrote a brand new piece for us called Americana. We'll be debuting at that time. It's a really neat piece that we've been practicing. Finish off our concert. We're going to have members of 312th Army Band there, including Tim Hewitt, who's a Clark City grad. They'll give a small concert ahead of it, and then they'll join us for the big concert. We're going to have brand new shirts, thanks to DJ Wilkins, and we'll have fireworks afterward, as well as free food again. So please come down for that. That'll be a really awesome event. I hope it'll really kind of.
But what time is that one on the 15th?
It started at 7:00 PM.
Seven, okay.
So we'll start playing, and that's going to go probably well past 8:30, you know.
That's the 15th, right?
16th. The 16th on Friday.
Yes, 15th.
15th or 15th?
15, 15. Don't listen to me, 15.
Okay.
15.
So we'll have the traffic safety committee meeting in the morning at the Avery Learning Center at 10:00 AM. We'll try to wrap that up in time to get back here. Are we still having the study section on June 16th?
Oh, we didn't talk about that. We need to, since we're going to meet this Friday.
July 16th, we have a work session planned. I wouldn't. I already be down anyways for the time capsule at one, so I mean, it's, unless you don't see a need, I would like, unless there's no need for, I don't know why we, I mean, we just make it a quick one, but in case we got to change anything for the Parrish Park.
I mean, we can find something to talk about. That's never a problem.
Things always come.
Yeah, I'd probably keep it. I hate going too long, because stuff starts building up if we, yeah.
16th, 15th session.
Yeah.
So yeah, so we'll have the work session, and then when we get done at one, we just all go out to the front and do that. And again, Pam's doing a lot of planning for that. I know we're going to have the capsule with a lot of. We didn't want to go ahead and bury one, because we wanted to see how they did it, make sure we do it correctly, until it lasts at least 50 years. That'll give us some time to kind of promote it, get people to give us stuff that I think will be buried everything in our home, this kind of current time. So that's at 1:00 PM, and then at 7:00 PM, the concert starts at the park, so that'll be bad mechanics opening for back roads. And of course, the Burford. So just a lot of stuff going on, and it all caps off on the 17th, we'll talk all, it's going to be a long day, but a good one. We now have 16 vendors signed up, and I've heard I might have another two, so we've got a lot of food available. Some market, she said it's the most she's ever had sign up. They're going to fill on the east side of the park. We have 60 registrants for the color run, which is really awesome, because that was kind of short notice to get that together. We'll be walking off Summit Street doing a color run from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. Actually, it starts at nine, and then when that wraps up, is when the big festival basically kicks off. We've got lots of entertainment lined up. Debbie Savala has been doing a decent job for the last almost year and a half now. I can't tell you how many bands we've had lined up that we've had to rebook or replace, just because cancellations and moving everything, but. Hopefully, we're going to get nailed down. We definitely have a mariachi band, two different groups of cultural dancers. We'll have a Native American dancer. She told me today she's working on some singers, and probably Baker will be DJing that night, probably get some karaoke. This is going to be an awesome time. So no matter when you come down, there'll be something going on. Hopefully, you can maybe down sometime on that day. And right now, fingers crossed, the weather is looking really good, like 88, 90, or 100. So let's hope that. See what we need.
Better than 99.
I'm looking forward to it. It's been a lot of work. This, I think, I've been planning this since about January of 2020. So it's really neat to see. Um, oh, and we'll also be doing the community spirit award for last year. I can't tell you who's going to get that, but it's a pleasant surprise. Be there about 12:15.
Process.
So Sunday at 11:00 AM, there'll be a community praise and worship service, a big setup Friday, 300 people, so. So lots of things going on. Don't let anyone tell you there is. And as we said, there'll be a land bank meeting. Somebody else for them to accomplish with that one, so. Trev, you're early if you can. Any questions?
Thank you, Andrew.
I just want to thank you guys for your support. You know, the city has extended some financial support to this event. It's, it's just a cool thing to do to celebrate our history and our heritage. A lot of people, a lot of community organizations have had a part of this. So I definitely want to thank all of them. I'm too made of this. But Pam Grant definitely serves a lot of credit for helping. She helped me get this organized, because once the pandemic hit, it kind of threw off our plans a bit. And she's done a really good job of rounding people up and keeping it all together. Uplifting from spin.
Thanks.
She is.
Anything from anyone out there? Motion to adjourn. If there's nothing else.
Move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're having a land bank meeting.
Land bank meeting will be at 5:00.